Good morning. Welcome to the Rotary Club of Hudson. My name is Marilyn Orr, President of the Club, and we are thrilled to have you join us today. This meeting broadcast is available on HCTV, as well as our Rotary of Hudson YouTube channel and Facebook. Our club meets weekly using this digital platform Zoom. When we meet in person, it's at Laurel Lake Retirement Community for breakfast. We hope to get back to that soon. We meet most Wednesday mornings from 7:15 to 8:30 a.m. So come out to join us for a meeting. We would love to have you as a guest. To learn more about Rotary, our club, and the impact we are having on our local community and the world, please visit our website, rotaryhudson.org. So enjoy this meeting today and help us share the message that Rotary opens doors of opportunity.
Good morning, Rotarians and guests. Welcome to the Rotary Club of Hudson. I'm Ron Strobel, the Sergeant at Arms, and we welcome everybody this morning. We have just a little banner we want to show you here before we get started. There it is. That's what you'll see on the back of the truck during the parade on Labor Day. Thanks to Nicole Kowalski for putting up with everybody that had suggestions, and I think she did a wonderful job. Our invocation this morning is by Father Joe Boisel.
Sorry, I didn't get the Mass Memo. I'll try to be a better behaved next week. I thought we would pray this morning, since we have the beginning of the school year, remembering our schools. So shall we pray? "O mighty God, by your gift alone, we come to wisdom and true understanding. Look with favor, we pray, on our universities, colleges, and schools, especially Hudson City Schools, Western Reserve Academy, and Seton Catholic School. The knowledge may be increased among us, and wholesome learning flourish and abound. Bless those who teach and those who learn, and grant that in humility of heart they may ever look to you, the fountain of all wisdom. Amen."
Thank you, Father. And the pledge and the four-way test. Alphabetically, we've finally come to Strobel. So I will lead you in the pledge and the four-way test this morning. Please join me in the pledge. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." And now, please join me in the four-way test of the things that we think, say, and do. First, is it the truth? Second, is it fair to all concerned? Third, will it build goodwill and better friendships? And fourth, will it be beneficial to all concerned? Thank you. And our President, Pat Shearer.
Thank you very much, Ron. And thanks again to Nicole Kowalski for creating that banner. And truly, that was designed by committees. So if you've ever been in a committee that's designing one item, you know how much work that was. So a couple of quick announcements. Next week, there is a board meeting of the Club Board. We'll be meeting next week. And then, two weeks from now, the Club Foundation Board will be meeting immediately. Both meetings will be immediately following our regularly scheduled meeting. Ed Sogan has a request for the Labor Day Parade.
Unfortunately, Mr. and Mrs. Claus are under the weather, and we need a substitute Santa and Mrs. Claus for the Labor Day Parade. That's next Monday, reporting in between 9:00 and 9:30. If anyone is willing to do that, we have great outfits. You will be riding in a 1992 Corvette convertible. So that's a plus. And we also need a driver. Santa can't drive. He does not have a license. So if, again, this is a plea last minute. We just got word from Mr. and Mrs. Claus. Again, they're stuck up in the North Pole, and it can't make it next Monday. So please see me. This is a desperate plea because we're coming down to the wire. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Ed. And for our quote to start our meeting today. "Education is the passport to the future. For tomorrow belongs to those who prepare for it today." Malcolm X. And with that, I will bring forward our Club member, David Basil, who will start our presentation today.
Thank you, President Pat. And good morning, fellow Rotarians, and welcome to all of our guests. I'm Dave Basil, and it's my pleasure to present, over the course of the next six meetings, beginning today and culminating on October 6th, the candidates for Hudson Board of Education and Hudson City Council. These are the candidates who will appear on the ballot for this fall's election. Recognizing the trend that has occurred over the past couple of elections for early voting, you may notice that we are holding these sessions a month earlier than usual. That is the reason. Also, there are a total of 13 candidates between the two elected bodies. In order to allow sufficient time for each candidate to outline their qualifications and to speak to the relevant issues, we will hear from three candidates for the Board of Education today. Future meetings will each feature two candidates for either school board or city council. In the course of these meetings, I will introduce each candidate, who will then have five minutes to discuss their qualifications and share their views on the issues. Following the candidates' prepared remarks, there will be an opportunity for questions from members and guests. Those present in the room should use the central microphone, located near the front of the auditorium, to pose a question. Those who are joining us via Zoom should use the chat feature, and their questions will then be read to the candidates. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond to a question. In order to facilitate as many questions as possible, please keep your questions short, direct, and to the point. Avoid long preamblels and statements which reduce the opportunity to learn about the views of those seeking elected office. We will circle back for follow-up questions after everyone has had an opportunity to ask the question they want to pose. Again, I appreciate your cooperation in all of that. The first candidate for Board of Education, who will be speaking to us today, is Diane De Monk. Diane is a former educator with a degree from Michigan, a school that I declined to attend. She has lived in Hudson for 10 years and has been serving the Hudson City School District as a parent volunteer. Diane is a writer, a business owner, and founder of the North Pole Mailbox, loved by all of the Hudson kids. Please join me in giving a warm Rotary welcome to Diane De Monk.
Hello and good morning. Nothing like having the newbie up first, right? So my name is Diane De Monk, and I am running for Hudson City School Board. I'm sure you're wondering why I'm running for school board. Well, let me tell you all, this was certainly not on my bucket list. But with what's been going on in our schools in the last year and a half, I have felt the need to stand up and speak up for students and families. I look forward to getting to know you all, as I'm sure you are wanting to get to know me as well. And since I have the floor, I will let you know a little bit about myself. I am the mom and raising three uniquely different and distinct children. My oldest just graduated from Hudson High School and last week left for Michigan State, which means my budget for food has gone down. Throughout his education in Hudson, I was found on the sidelines of football games, from Hawks to high school. Throughout his education at Hudson, I was in the stands selling raffle tickets at the concessions, and you would find me at wrestling matches as well. This was all fine Friday nightlights. It has all not been sports and cheering for me, though. As a mother of a special needs child, I have learned to navigate the IEP system and work closely with staff and support staff for continued educational, emotional, and social growth and success of my child. My youngest is in eighth grade, and she is living her best life at the new middle school. These precious years go by so fast. I personally graduated from the University of Michigan, so don't hate me yet, but I have a degree in teaching and have nine years' teaching experience in both the suburban and rural areas. I also have three years of coaching experience. I taught in both urban and suburban areas, as I just said, and I served on the Northwest Louisiana Red Cross after Hurricane Katrina hit. I've worked actively with schools in South Africa when I lived there as well. I'm also the founder of the Hudson North Pole Mailbox, a personal passion project of mine that brings the spirit of Christmas to all that believe. I am humbled that this small mailbox has become such an incredibly special model for our city and our children, as well as surrounding cities. Last year, the mailbox received over 2,400 letters, and Santa Claus and his elves answered each and every letter to each child. In fact, Santa was writing to children on Christmas Eve, ensuring that the children of Hudson were indeed on the nice list. That's a big deal. I own two small thriving businesses, D&amp;D Hudson Rentals and Blonde and Ordained. Yes, I am an ordained minister, and I get the blessings of uniting couples in marriage. I've also recently received my real estate license. So not only will I assist people with the biggest commitment of their lives, I also will now assist them with the biggest purchase of their lives. Throughout my life experiences, a constant theme and core value of mine runs true, which is I love to unite and empower others. I look forward to bringing this competency to the Hudson School Board. I am dedicated to leadership, advocating and empowering students, parents, and teachers, and will stand firm when necessary. My goal as a school board member is to first prioritize our students, empower parents and family, three, support teachers, and four, operate in a fiscally responsible and transparent manner. So please let me briefly speak about those four points. First, I will prioritize our students. Each student is unique, and their education should be as unique as to them. We need to be responsive to their individual needs. Second, I will work to empower our students, I'm sorry, our parents and families. Parents must be best equipped to make the right decisions for their children. They must be allowed to have a strong voice for their children in the education system. Three, I will support teachers. Our teachers are the lifeblood of our school. Nothing has a greater impact on our children's education than an excellent teacher and support staff in the classroom. And finally, I pledge to operate in a fiscally reserved way and transparent manner. These were your hard-earned dollars before they became the school's dollars, and I will make sure that I'm a good steward of your money. In conclusion, our goal as a community is to raise up the next generation to lead successful, flourishing lives beyond Hudson High School, to live with character and dignity, to be critical thinkers, to be able to take the information, data, and context situations and make sound decisions from them, to be ready and responsible. Our students will be supported, challenged, and their differences embraced as they matriculate through the Hudson School System. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. Next, we will hear from Alisa Wright. Alisa is completing her first term and is seeking reelection to the Hudson City School District Board of Education. Alisa grew up on North Hill in Akron, graduating from North High School in 1986. Her husband Brad Wright is a 1983 graduate of Hudson High School, and they have resided in Hudson for over 24 years. Their two daughters graduated from Hudson High School, and their son is currently a sophomore at the high school. A graduate of the University of Akron and the Ohio State University Moritz School of Law, Alisa was formerly a business litigation partner at Rutzell LPA and is currently in-house counsel for a local family-owned business. Alisa and Brad are also longtime members of the First Congregational Church of Hudson. Prior to her election to the Board of Education in 2017, Alisa was the longstanding treasurer of the Citizens Committee for Hudson Schools, planning and executing numerous levy campaigns for the district. A volunteer with Hudson Community first for many years, Alisa now serves on its executive board. She is an active member of the Hudson City Schools Foundation, is serving her third term on the Hudson City Schools Endowment Fund Scholarship Committee, and is a member of the district's Parent and Staff Safety Advisory Committee. Please join me in giving a warm Rotary welcome to Alisa Wright.
Good morning. You would think I'd be less nervous about this than some of our recent school board meetings, but excuse me, I am a little nervous this morning. But thank you for welcoming us all here and giving us this opportunity to address you. As David said, I'm Alisa Wright, and I'm seeking reelection to my second term on the Hudson City School Board of Education. I thought that I would share with you the reasons why I would like to serve our schools and our communities once again. The first reason is because this job is easy. It's been easy to serve with David Zero, Steve Demaro, Tom Tobin, and James Field, all of whom are dedicated, professional, and focused on our students. We may not always agree, but we listen, we are civil, and we are focused on our students. And we have worked together to keep moving our schools forward, especially during these unprecedented times. It's easy to serve when you're guided by Phil Herman as superintendent, treasurers like Catherine Sines and now Philip Budo, and their entire administrative team. Prior to my election, I had worked with teachers and school leaders for 20 years in the classrooms, on levy committees, and in community organizations. And I knew that our schools and the people in them were excellent. But working now from the inside, it's clear that our leadership is unmatched. And from the top down, the singular motivation of every employee in the district, without politics or personal agendas, is to provide high-quality education for our kids in a safe and nurturing learning environment. It is easy to work towards that goal. It is also easy to serve a community that shows up with financial support, constructive input, developmental programming and leadership for our youth, as Rotary provides, and gratitude for the excellent school system that is the very foundation of Hudson. Believe me when I tell you that we have the support of the community. We hear it every day, by phone, by email, at the stadium, in the grocery store, and at church. And it is easy when people that you represent tell you they trust you and they appreciate the job that you're doing. Finally, it's easy to work with and for parents who are present and involved, and students who excel academically, achieve great success in extracurricular activities, and who are resilient. We have almost 1,000 students currently participating in fall sports. We have 500 students participating in marching band choir, orchestra, drama, show choir, and jazz band. We have science Olympiad and robotics teams, power of the pen, school newspaper, and yearbook. We have young Republicans and young Democrats. We have Asian awareness and African-American awareness clubs. We have sparkle cheerleading, and we have a sunrise-watching club. So many different interests and experiences to celebrate. And yet, we have students who tell us, when we ask them, that they do not feel as if they belong. They do not feel as if they are valued. They do not feel as if they are heard. We have students with disabilities and gifted students that we serve so well, but we have kids in between struggling to figure out where they fit in, how to succeed, and how to breathe. I'm sorry, what was that? Okay. Our kids have perfect scores and mental health struggles to go with them. We are hearing from parents and teachers that our elementary-age kids are experiencing anxiety before they even hear the word. And that brings me to the second reason why I want to serve again. We have work to do. The third reason why I want to serve is because I'm good at it. As an elected representative, I seek out input and value the experiences of our community, our students, and our parents. I've accomplished many things in the safety and wellness of our kids with students at the center. So thank you for having me here, and I hope that you'll reelect me for school board.
Thank you, Alisa. We apologize, there were a couple of technical issues. Apparently, some staff inadvertently turned off some of the technology that we're relying on for our meetings. So... I think you're fine, Alisa. And finally, going in alphabetical order, we will hear from David Zero, an experience I'm certain he's familiar with. David is completing his 12th year as a member of the Hudson Board of Education and has served as Board President for the past 11 years. David received a BA degree from Muskingham College, where he obtained a teaching certificate in secondary mathematics. He then studied as a Rockefeller Fellow at Yale University before embarking on a 32-year career with AT&amp;T, where he held a variety of network, marketing, and rates and regulatory positions. During his career, he attained an MBA from Baldwin Wallace, and after retirement, he earned his law degree from the University of Akron. He was admitted to the Ohio Bar shortly before receiving his Golden Buckeye Card. Following law school, he embarked on a second career as a judicial attorney for the Ninth District Court of Appeals of Ohio in Akron before being elected to the school board. David and his wife Donna, a retired early childhood educator in Hudson, have been married for 51 years and have lived in Hudson for 35 years. They are pleased that all three of their children, their daughter-in-law and two of their five grandchildren, are graduates of Hudson High School. Please join me in giving a warm Rotary welcome to David Zero.
Good morning, Hudson Rotary, and thank you for hosting this series of forums, giving the candidates an opportunity to share their views with you. Perhaps you noticed The Hager, the horrible cartoon that appeared last Thursday in the Akron Beacon Journal. Warrior Hager comes dragging through the front door, all beaten and battered and bruised, and announces, "I'm home from battle," upon which his wife appears in the room, appearing even more beaten, battered, and bruised, and responds, "I'm home from the school board meeting." The troubling kernel of truth here is that these are exceptionally challenging times, not only for the Hudson School Board, but for school boards across the country. Unfortunately, the polarization that exists in society is playing itself out in Hudson schools and complicating efforts to carry out our primary mission to serve the best interests of our students. For example, doing what it takes to ensure a safe, welcoming, and nurturing learning environment for all of our children is a goal that should transcend politics. For Hudson, this means helping our students appreciate one another and encouraging them to treat each other with consideration and kindness. In the interest of safety and well-being, this also means taking the necessary precautions strongly recommended by medical professionals to prevent COVID spread within our schools. The goal is to keep our children in the classroom. With these and other challenges, I am thankful to serve on a board with Alisa Wright, Steve Demaro, James Field, and Tom Tobin, all of whom, without exception, have consistently demonstrated their unwavering commitment to serving our students. So why do I wish to continue under the current environment? 12 years ago, I ran because I wanted to give back. And while that desire remains, over the years, I've grown to care even more deeply about our children, our staff, and the quality of life in our community. Hudson City Schools are one of the crown jewels of this community and should not be taken for granted. The depth of experience that the incumbent board members bring to the table is needed now more than ever to effectively guide our district through these challenging times. I would hate to unnecessarily risk all that we have accomplished over the past dozen years or so. I'm proud of our track record. Hudson Schools continually rank among the top districts in the state, and we are consistently ranked nationally. The proof is in the pudding. The overwhelming feedback that we receive from recent graduates is how well-prepared they find themselves to successfully perform in their college classes. We want to keep our schools strong. Hudson emphasizes the development of the whole child, beginning with Stephen Covey's Seven Habits of Highly Effective Kids at the elementary level. It continues throughout the high school experience, anchored by our Portrait of an Explorer initiative. Character traits such as engaged collaborator, empathetic contributor, adaptive problem solver, ethical citizen, lifelong learner, and critical thinker are emphasized to prepare our students for productive citizenship. Opportunities abound in athletics, music, theater, and a multitude of extracurricular activities. Outstanding educational programs and opportunities are available to enable all students to maximize their potential, regardless of individual circumstances. Community service opportunities begin at the elementary level, continue in middle school, and culminate with high school service learning program. Our board has accomplished much in the financial area, and there's much to be proud of in terms of facilities. But despite all of our accomplishments... Excuse me. Our board has accomplished much in the financial area. I am proud to be able to say that our district has not gone to voters seeking an operating levy for the past 10 years, and current financial projections indicate that we're still a couple of years away. We right-sized our staff, instituted expense control measures and refinanced debt. We refined our compensation systems. There's much to be proud of in facilities. We're all aware of a master facilities plan, including the new Hudson Middle School. But despite all of our accomplishments, much remains to be done. I want to continue to help, and if reelected, I will continue to provide professional leadership, promote academic excellence, demand fiscal responsibility, encourage community involvement and support, promote safe and welcoming schools, and emphasize the development of the whole child. With current challenges, it's more important than ever to make the right choice. I would appreciate your support, November. Thank you.
We'll now open the floor for questions from those in the auditorium, and those joining us via Zoom can send their questions in again by chat. The first question from the auditorium. The first question from the auditorium.
Okay, thank you very much, all three of you for coming. This is actually a question for Diane De Monk, but also the rest of the board can answer. At the July 26, the July 26 school board meeting, you read a prepared statement that included the following, and I quote, "I hope that you are able to define," this is to the school board, "on August 9, the school district's definition of equity. As it stands right now, the term is being used to take away AP classes and other accelerated classes in order to create an equal-level playing field and not allowing, excuse me, students to receive their fullest potential." The next mean you said that you were not referring to the school district. But a question is this, is what research that you did to cause you to apply that to the public that the Hudson District was eliminating advanced classes with the goal of making a level playing field and that the district would do anything to limit students from reaching their full potential? My question to the other candidates is whether they have seen anything in the Hudson Diversity Equity and Inclusion Initiatives that would limit students from reaching their full potential. Thank you.
Well, first of all, as I if you remember during the following meeting, you had called me out on that, and I came up and spoke. The word DEI, Diversity Equity Inclusion, is used throughout the United States. Hudson is not just special with it. We also have a DEI initiative in our community and a lot of other communities. The one word that I was missing was across the country. And I have been reading different, there's a school district in Oregon that has just taken away the proficiency tests for high schools. So all children just receive a degree, a diploma at the end of the day. So when I brought this up, I was, my concern was, are we going to be like other districts in the nation? Because this is coming in the name of equity to create a playing field and have equal outcomes. How we're defining equity in Hudson Schools needs to be different than how the country is defining equity. I believe in equal opportunities for our children, not creating equitable fields. So in doing that, that's what I meant, and I had said so at the following board meeting to you, and I'm saying it again. Thank you.
With respect to the question that was addressed to us, I'd like to say that we have had different perspectives expressed at our board meeting, and I just want to acknowledge that I think it is important for us to hear all of those perspectives. We do have a DEI initiative to answer James' question. There's, there's nothing in our plan that would suggest that we would be eliminating programs that allow all of our kids to excel and to achieve and reach their fullest potential. That's not what our DEI program is intended to do or is doing. But again, I think it's important that we have heard different perspectives, in part because there are things going on outside of our school district and across the country. And we all felt that it was very important for Phil Herman and Doreen Osman, the Assistant Superintendent, and Niree Wilkerson, the DEI Coordinator, to make a presentation, and they did at our August 9 board meeting that sets out where this programming has come from, its purpose, where it's going, how we define diversity, equity, inclusion, so that we can be responsive to the needs of our kids and help everyone achieve the highest success possible in a safe and nurturing learning environment.
There are a lot of misconceptions out there. Equity does not mean equal outcomes to the Hudson City Schools. Equity means fairness. And what it means is that, given the individual circumstances of any particular student, we at times will provide extra resources directed toward that particular student based on their circumstances. A prime example in what we have been doing for years is providing extra support services for special need students. We provide AP classes for students who need those extra challenges. The fairness that this provides enables every student, which is our goal, to reach the maximum of their particular potential. That is not equal outcomes, that is fairness, and that is our approach toward equity.
Any other questions from the auditorium? And I would ask that, out of respect for all of the candidates, we refrain from applauding individual responses.
Good morning. My name's Tanya Neemer, and I'm going to make this like a school board meeting and keep talking about DEI and ask the same questions over and over again. So we kind of addressed what would happen if there's AP programs. So it seems like that question was answered, that the school board has no intention of eliminating AP programs. But what is the intention of the school board moving forward as it pertains to DEI and to you as candidates? What do you think about it? And I just say that as a parent who comes from, you know, I'm a first-generation Lebanese immigrant. So we speak three languages in our family, and it's been very useful to me as a professional to have that diversity and that ability, and it's actually given me a leg up. And I want my kids to have that leg up, to have that diversity, that inclusion, and that equity in their school too. So I'd be interested to hear your opinions.
Yes, thank you for that question. As Elisa Wright mentioned in her comments, we have some students, unfortunately, sadly, who don't feel as welcome in our schools as they deserve and ought to feel. And, and our primary goal with respect to diversity amongst the students is to cultivate within our students an appreciation for one another, an appreciation for one another's differences, a respect for a variety of ethnicities, cultures, backgrounds, and experiences without demeaning or belittling one another. We have some kids that are really being made to feel through disparaging remarks on the part of other kids in a way that is just not acceptable. And to us, that's what we want to continue to emphasize with respect to diversity. As I mentioned, with respect to equity, it's a matter of fairness, being fairness to all of our students and providing whatever they need to help them reach their individual potentials. And with respect to inclusion, we want to make sure to provide opportunities to all students so that they can be, feel included in the school and its activities. Lisa mentioned, excuse me, Elisa mentioned Sparkle Chair, and we also have our Time to Shine programs directed toward special need students who otherwise wouldn't have those opportunities.
I think first and foremost, we're going to celebrate diversity. We do have a diverse student population, many different races, ethnic backgrounds. We have almost 80 English as second language learners. So we're going to create programming and opportunities where our kids, with our teachers and our administrators and the community, that's always a goal, can celebrate diversity. With respect to equity, you know, we are going to continue to meet our kids where they are. And if they need reading intervention, we're going to provide that. We are going to probably look harder to see what it is that our, that our kids need. We've been practicing equity in the sense of helping to create an environment and giving our kids the support they need to learn and reach their potential for a long time. This isn't, this isn't new. And then with respect to inclusion, to try to foster a culture within our school where kids feel as if they, as if they belong and everyone feels welcome. It's, it's not, it's not about taking things away from any kids. It's about giving them more and helping them all to be the best learners that they can be. It's also one thing specifically, you know, we're auditing some of our grade school books. We're making sure that kids see themselves, for example, in grade school books. I don't have any problem with that. I think that's important. We're going to consider trying to recruit additional high-qualified candidates that better reflect who our students are, so that kids see, see teachers that look like themselves. These are all things that are student-centered and designed to help our students achieve.
Once again, I wanted to make clear and clarify that I did not mean that Hudson Schools was taking away AP classes, because my son just graduated taking those classes. When we talk about diversity and equity and inclusion, I think there is some issues in the sense, well, first, let's talk about the positives. My children have gone through the Hudson School system, and between the music programs and the different diversity programs we have, I think they're absolutely excellent. However, when we do pit one color versus another, I think we're kind of miscuing where diversity comes from. Diversity is a beautiful thing. Every color, every person, I'm Native American, Indian, and Maltese, and so are my children. It's a beautiful thing to be able to say that I'm a nominee Indian and to say that to my children. Whether you're black, you're white, Indian, of Asian descent, we need to celebrate all of you. And I believe that that happens in Hudson Schools. However, there are some books that we need to look into, and we are dipping our toes in CRT, especially when we have authors like Kendi. I am a personal believer and supporter of Martin Luther King. I do believe that all people are created equally. And when we talk about equality, that's where I get concerned as far as equity and where it gets miscued. Throughout the country, it is used as a different, a different definition than we're using it. So I do feel it needs to be defined. And yes, the DEI coordinator did come up to describe everything they were going to teach. However, we still don't know how much time is being taken away from education to teach diversity, equity, and inclusion. I am all for diverse equity inclusion. However, it needs to represent everybody and be welcoming to every student. Without a doubt, all of our students need to feel welcome in Hudson Schools. And I think there's a way, able, there is a way to do that without putting any other race down. Thank you.
David, is there an opportunity for just additional comments to that comment?
There was one other question, and they were asking how many school board positions are up for election, and there are three.
Three and five, five candidates running for those three positions.
Thank you. From those in attendance in the audience, yes, how the Joe.
Yeah, I know this is a really, this, the, I think is really a hot button object or issue. I just was a little bit intrigued when you mentioned a specific author. And Diane, is that your name? Okay, I'm sorry. And that is, and I don't even know who this author is. I just wonder, in a, in an inclusive, critical thought environment, are there authors that are off limits and authors that are on limits? Or I mean, how are, how are you all approaching the issue of allowing people to read things that maybe you don't agree with because we need to read things that we don't agree with? We don't just always read and listen to the people who we already are in agreement with. I mean, an echo chamber is not an education. So how do you deal with the, the issue of diversity of thought when it conflicts with your own kind of personal opinions? I guess that would be for all of you, not really just for one of you.
Well, I guess it depends on if you are a proponent of CRT or not. Critical race theory is a Marxist theory. And also authors such as Kendi use race to pit us, to pit against other races. According to Ibram Kendi, every white person is racist. I'm not racist. I don't believe David Zero is racist, and I certainly don't think Alyssa Wright is racist. And to bring that philosophy is more of an indoctrination. And also, Ibram Kendi believes in Marxism, which I don't believe in. So as far as having that in schools, I don't feel it has any place in school.
I just, I just want to be clear, since, because I don't want anything that's being set up here to be misconstrued. We do not have a DEI curriculum. We are not advancing, we, the district, the school board, our DEI initiative is not advancing a particular curriculum. We are not advancing critical race theory curriculum. To be honest, we haven't, you know, if there are school boards that are, I imagine it's subject to debate. We haven't, we're not even having that discussion because that's not what we are doing. We are in the early stages of our diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. We are taking a look at what it is, the supports that we are providing to our students, the books that are in our library. We are looking at those things and trying to figure out what more we can do so that our students see themselves in our, in the books, in the celebrations, in our programming. That's what we're doing, and we're at the very early stages. We are, the books that are being mentioned today are on a, our Diversity Equity Inclusion Coordinator's website as potential suggested reading for staff. If they want to look into, and there's other books, if they want to look into readings on diversity, equity, inclusion, it's not in, those books are not in our curriculum. They're not being required. I just want, I just want everyone to be clear about that. We are trying to create critical thinkers. The Portrait of an Explorer that Dave taught, Dave Zero talked about is something that we are so very proud of. It was part of our strategic planning long before the DEI position was even created. We are trying to create lifelong contributors and learners and critical thinkers. That's what we're trying to do.
I'm not sure there's a whole lot I can add to what Elisa just said, but critical race theory, to be very clear, is not a part of our curriculum. We follow the state guidelines for curriculum. It's not a part of the state curriculum. We don't have a DEI curriculum, as Elisa pointed out. And as far as books on a suggested list of readings, as one of many books to help people become more informed, they're intended to be viewed critically, and we would hope that all of our staff who chooses to read any book would, advocating any position, would, would look at it critically and accept some of it and question other parts of it. I guess, I feel that, again, there are some misconceptions out there. We are not advocating any particular positions with respect to this, and we are certainly not trying to pit one race against another. We are trying for all to appreciate one another. And it's not about creating racism so much as trying to get past it to the extent that we can.
Yes, it's from John Adams. To each candidate, if I didn't vote for you, what nice thing can you say about why I would vote for the other candidates present today?
I guess I'll start. First of all, I'll start with Diane. I think that anybody who, under the current circumstances, is willing to step up and put themselves out there and run for the Board of Education, given all of the challenges, given all of the time, effort, dedication that is required to do this job, deserves to be commended. And so Diane, I commend you for that. To Elisa, or with respect to Elisa, I will say I have served with Elisa the last four years on this Board of Education, and I have nothing and I have nothing but the highest regard for her. She is a highly dedicated, hardworking, deep thinker who absolutely, heart and soul, cares about our children and their well-being and their education. And I, I hold her in the highest regard and appreciate all that she has done.
I would say what, what you should know about Diane is what I know about Diane, even though we're acquaintances, is that she makes a difference in our community. And when she does that, it is, I think, most often on behalf of kids. So I believe that her, her wanting to be on Hudson School Board is coming from a place in her heart where she wants to serve our students. And I, and I appreciate that, again, especially in, in this climate. Not, not easy to do, I don't think. So Dave, I probably don't have enough time to talk about Dave. Dave, I've known him for a long time. But again, just like in working with the schools and seeing it from the inside, being, working side by side with Dave has been such a gift. And he is just the epitome of professionalism, civility, kindness, such a hard worker. But he also, you know, in addition to creating our agenda and guiding the board as our president, he is present, he is present in the classroom, in the hallways. People know him, our kids know him, our parents know him. So he is such a fine representative, and he, he has the ear of the community, and he gives voice to so many concerns. But again, in such a civil and professional manner, what a, what a great leader he is.
Thank you, both of you. And unfortunately, I don't know either of you personally to give you recommendations, so I just can go by your record. And Dave, you have served our school board in our community for over 12 years, and that is complete dedication and the coffees and to listen to everyone and to sit through. And Elisa, you, to sit through the meetings that the two of you have had to sit through and listen to several, several parents and make very hard decisions, especially in this last year under this climate. And with COVID, you both have done amazing jobs. And I think everyone has done what we can do, what's best for our children. So I commend you both on that. Thank you.
Any last question from the auditorium? Yes.
A quick last question. Hudson has a reputation as, at the school board level for operating in the sunshine, which is incredibly important to our citizens. What do you feel that the school board could do in addition to how it already functions to be sure that the citizens of Hudson have access to inform your decision-making or learn from you?
Well, it's a good question, and it's an important one. We absolutely are committed to abiding by both the law and the spirit when it comes to the sunshine laws. We ask ourselves that continually. We do operate in the sunshine. We hold our sessions as open sessions. We provide opportunity for public comments in every one of our regular meetings, even though that's not a requirement. We do have executive sessions, but we strictly adhere to the topics listed in the law as far as what executive session discussions can contain. We try to post a lot of information on our website so that the community is aware in advance of all, for example, policy recommendation and changes that we intend to make. We publish our agendas prior to the meeting. We make the meetings available on the website, both by live stream and catalog them on the website so that people have an opportunity to go back and view them if they have missed them. We have a lot of communications coming out from our district in terms of policies and procedures and information and so forth. We, we strive for transparency and we strive to do everything really out in the open because we, we are elected officials, and that's our obligation. And we think that serves the community best.
I agree. I think, I think that we do operate with transparency and openness. Although I feel as if, given the misconceptions, especially concerning DEI lately, the number of people that have been coming to our school board meetings with questions and concerns that are simply not well-founded based on what it is that we are doing. I think that, you know, we've had conversations, I've had conversations with Superintendent Herman, that we need to perhaps do a better job of just pushing that information out again and again. Not, you know, not necessarily just at our school board meetings, which of course are open, available to live stream, available to review after the fact, but also, you know, in additional pointed communications that are just continuing to inform the public what it is we're doing and why. Phil Herman's a big proponent of always explaining why. So maybe, you know, some additional PR, because I think we are very transparent and open, but just trying to reach more people with the truthful and accurate information as to what it is that we are doing.
I personally would like to see more transparency from the school board and the subcommittees, especially when it comes to DEI. From the feedback I've gotten from other parents, they've tried to be on these subcommittees and were denied. And so I'm concerned with that. And these subcommittees are meeting and making decisions that are not and do not fall under the Sunshine Act. And as far as more transparency, I would have liked to see more transparency too. When it came to the old middle school, there was a reversion call, actually two reversion, two deeds that went to that school. And it reverted the school back to WRA, if it was not kept as a place of education, if I'm correct in using that word, kept in the school. And all of a sudden, something happened and the deed was fined. Now, how we got from point A to point B, I don't know. And there was no meetings about that. And in addition, on Monday, the board walked in unanimously wearing masks. Now, I'm not pro mask, against mask. I personally am for parents making that decision on their own. I do believe that parents make safety, well thought out safety decisions for their own children. However, when our school board walked out with masks on at that board meeting, their decision was already made. There wasn't a vote that was going to take place. And that did not come on the agenda until that day. And there were rumors, obviously, that spread through the community that this was going to happen on Monday. And I don't think that was fair to the community and the parents, especially when we had masked and unmasked classes already established. With, if I am correct, about 73% of the parents wanted their children unmasked, and 38 wanted them masked. Now, my numbers may be a little skewed. However, with that being in place, to come out and, and make a decision like that, all being masked, already ready to go, I don't think that was fair to the parents and left them scrambling. Thank you.
Please.
If I may, if I could have a short rebuttal on that, just three, three points. The, okay.
Thank you very much, too, for being here this morning.